Okay, we're gonna get started, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name's Eric Green. I'm the mayor of Alpine. And sorry about the last-minute change to this location, but we thought it was important enough to have it here so it could be broadcast and livestreamed out into the Internet world. So appreciate you coming in here, and sorry that it's such tight quarters. I will send Senator Doc Stater. We'll put you over here. So we are planning on about 90 minutes of discussion tonight, and we're gonna have Shay and Emily and Dan speak in a little bit. And then we're gonna leave about 30 minutes at the tail end for questions and comments and things of that nature. But first of all, let me make introductions real quick. Senator Doc Stater was a last-minute arrival. Thank you, Senator, for coming. We have County Treasurer Greenfield.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connolly. Commissioner Bowes?
Bowers.
Bowers. Oh, they left R off my list. I'm sorry. Commissioner Hanson. And County Assessor Larson. So thank you. I know everyone came a long distance again.
Nobody back here can hear you. You might want to speak up or use your microphone.
Yeah, we don't have a microphone that will project out there. So that's part of the issue. But so the reason for bringing it here was so we could live-cast it out there to the rest of the county. So it was that important. We didn't have that opportunity to do it over at the Civic Center. So I will let Emily or Shay, whomever, take over. And I guess we'll just have to make sure we project our voices out there so people out there can hear us. But I'll let you guys take it.
Okay. So thank you, Mayor. This was, our mayor was instrumental in putting this together. This is long overdue.
Thank you so much. Well, I might be overly loud. I'm Alpine Town Councilwoman Emily Castillo. And really, why we are so appreciative that representatives of the county could come today is because we've seen a lot of shifts. And as elected officials, every single one of us in the town and in the county, we have a fiduciary responsibility with taxpayer money. And transparency has been touted by our governor to be really, really key and part of his mission statement. So that is the purpose of this forum today. It's gonna be about 90 minutes. Depending on how quickly we get through this agenda, we want to allot as much time as possible for constituents to come up and have an open dialogue and a Q and A. We're looking at probably 20 to 30 minutes for that more if we can get through this quickly. It's a two-pronged approach. We are gonna be talking about Senator Dan Doc Stater's bill, which was passed, and that is the property tax refund application. Some people will be able to apply for that. I went ahead and put that website up on the board. Sorry, it's a little light. I can give anybody who wishes to learn more about that the information that they need to apply. We will be going through that process. But we're also gonna be digging a little bit deeper. And we're gonna be talking about the 30% increase in assessments, how assessments are made, because that process may not be very intuitive. It certainly wasn't for me. And we're gonna be talking about mill levies. We're seeing a lot of shifts. We're getting our assessments, and we're suddenly having to budget $1,000, $2,000, $5,000 more than we've ever had. And I don't know about you, but I can't give myself a raise to accomplish that, especially if you're like my family, single income, fixed income. We're just looking for how can the county react when we see a softening market and when we see increases in our assessments? What is, and this is the perfect opportunity for our county officials to tell us, we are here to protect you. We're here to look out for you. This is what we are doing to alleviate that stress, either through our mill levy, through special districts. There's a myriad of ways that we can accomplish this. So we really just wanted to get feedback. We wanted to hear their voices. We wanted them to hear our voices and just really open up that channel of communication and see what we can do. Because I know that there are state initiatives that our senator, our House representatives are working really, really hard to push in legislature. But we need relief right now. This can't be 2023. This can't be 2024. We know there are things in the pipeline on a larger scale statewide that are being accomplished. But if you're like me, you're seeing your grocery bills go up. You're seeing our mortgage rates go up. Our interest rates go up. Everything is going up. And many of us are just trying to be good citizens, pay our taxes, and still find money to survive and to pay for our families. So that's what we're trying to accomplish today. We do have an agenda. Really quickly, some of the discussion topics that we're gonna open up to our officials are the assessment methodology, like I talked about. How do they get to assessment valuation? Assessment of older homes versus newer construction. And please, there's extra chairs up here should anyone want to come sit.
I'm in a meeting.
We're gonna be talking about mill levies, what reductions are available, what power, let's say, our commissioners have to tackle that. And then we're gonna go ahead and go into the refund and the Q and A. So thank you so much, all of you, for coming and making the time tonight after a long day's work to come and talk about this with us.
Okay.
Okay. As Emily discussed, one of the items that we're hoping, probably Debbie can discuss as far as, our 30% increase in assessments. So one of the things that we started to drill down into is Wyoming State statute, and I don't know my numbers, but is that assessed value should be less than market value. And that once that happens, then that is kind of what they're working off of to work on our mill levy amounts. So one of the things I'm hoping we can do, and this is for laymen that do not know how to calculate mill levy, like, you know, like my multiplication tables.
Like we were at the beginning.
Yeah. So what we were hoping is we're trying to figure out assessment times mill levy is what we pay. So what is the budget correlation to that when we see mill levies on our bills and who gets what amount? So one of the things we're hoping, kind of like we learned in grade school, is show us the math problem. So one of the things we're kind of hoping is Debbie can explain to us, how do you get the math? I mean, that's one of the hardest dynamics as we drill down. Where do these numbers come from? Then what we're also trying to understand is, where do the budgets come from once assessments are finalized? Is it the assessment? It's like the egg before the chicken. Does the assessment come first, and then our districts create a budget off of that? Or are the budgets blindly provided, and then the assessment is figured out? Because one of the items that we're starting to notice is in Teton County, I don't know if you guys knew this, but last May, weed and pests up in Teton County said, "We don't need what you're offering us." So they lowered their budget. Teton County does not take their full mill levy on everything, which sounds crazy, but they understand what their dynamic is. So one of the things we're trying to do is, let's get to a point of a 30% increase in budgets. And I don't want to misspeak, so I'll give you guys all the time to discuss it. Where is that money going? If I operated my household on the same budget last year, I don't increase my budget 30% like that. So I really want to figure that out. And one of the things we truly want to get down to is, budgets are about to be submitted by all the mill levies. We'll probably pull that up and show it to you guys. We would like, and we're hoping, the commissioners can go back to those mill levy districts and say, "Hey, your friends and neighbors do not need to pay extra property tax to kind of stuff your budget." So that's another item that we're hoping can be discussed.
Shay?
Yes.
I got just a text from somebody watching.
They can't hear us? Oh, okay. Well, I felt like I was on...
Is it not?
Okay.
I think it's happening okay because I can hear someone playing it back there. Hopefully they can hear.
Can you, if I, like, I guess, do we have to be this close to the microphone?
Is that better?
It may not be the microphone?
I don't think you should have to, but try.
Okay. Okay, well, then we're gonna test it to see if it gets any better. They do? Okay. So those, that's kind of from my portion of presenting is, we just want to figure out, as Emily had just said, what can be an instantaneous saving for our community that the state legislature, you know, two months, nothing was passed besides, I think, and I don't want him to speak, Senator Doc Stater, was a refund package, which for a lot of people isn't even possible if you look at your non-taxable income, regular income. So the idea that came to us is other counties don't take their full mill levy. So why are we different? Why are we not doing that? And I want to give you guys a chance to answer that. So that was a lot. I know I threw a lot at you.
A lot? That was like 90 questions.
I know, I know. So, yeah, I agree. So let's go back. So really, the first thing, and I want to make sure I address any questions you have. But I think the biggest is kind of like, show us the work of how our valuation is created. I guess the math behind it would be, I don't want to, you know, I want to go the direction everyone wants to hear.
Why did it jump so big this year?
I guess those, yeah. I don't know that answer. So we'll see what they say. Yes. Oh, no, no, no. You can do it right from there.
Just slide up to the mic.
Yeah, just slide up to the mic. And you can pull it, yeah, towards you.
Okay. Will they be able to hear me out there? I'm not gonna have much of a voice because I've done a lot of talking over the last 40 days.
Yeah.
So technically, there's three parts to... You know what? We will have you stand here. Sorry. I guess this will be the hot mic. Okay, can you guys hear me back there?
The mic doesn't get a...
The mic doesn't help you. It just helps the TV. So there is no mic to talk farther out there. So basically, there's three parts to property tax system. You have the property tax by state statute and Wyoming Constitution is to be based off of market value. Then we set the market value, and then it's taken by the assessment ratio, which is a state statute set ratio. Residential, commercial, and ag is 9.5% of market. Industry is 11.5% of market. And minerals are taxed at 100%. So, and then, once that value is set, the assessed value, then that is taken times the mill levy of all of the entities in the county, which is the county, your cemeteries, school districts, et cetera. I, that part Jerry Greenfield's gonna talk to. I, my office sets the value for property tax purposes. That is based off of, because it is a mass appraisal process, we don't go out and find three exact comparables for every single property because we value over 12,000 parcels every year. So it's a mass appraisal process, which is basically a market-adjusted replacement cost-new-less depreciation. So when you see my field nisters out in the field and they're gathering all the inventory, how big your house is, how old it is, everything seems like an invasion of your privacy, and technically, it is. But that is where we start. We start on replacement cost-new-less depreciation. That requires us to have that type of inventory on file because that is our starting point. So when we start setting values, we take those replacement cost-new-less depreciation values and compare it to the sale prices of the sold properties. When I started my analysis in 2023, granted, we're in '23 now, and according to Shay and everybody else, the market is softening. But we had to use '22 sales because we're always a year behind. Because we can't use '23 sales because we have to have our value set. So we're basing everything as of the condition of the property, who owned it, and what the sales were in '22. Okay, so we're kind of a year behind. So if the market is going down, you won't see that until '24. So when I started my analysis, my median, which is like taking all the sales and finding out where my middle median is, we were at .78. So I knew, even with my starting values in '23 with a huge increase that happened in '22 based off of '21 sales, I was still, the values were still too low. Replacement cost marketed, market adjusted, was still too low. So there was gonna be an increase. The land, the land median was like .68. The improved median was .78. So I knew that there were, you were gonna see increases. So basically, what we do, and we don't compare, like, there's multiple different areas in Alpine. We don't compare Alpine to Star Valley Ranch. We don't compare Afton to Star Valley Ranch or Alpine. We have different assessment areas throughout the county. So you're gonna see different market adjustments, and you're gonna see different increases. So when you say 30% across the board, a lot of it was 30%, but there was some that were higher because some of the market adjustments went up. Nothing really went down. We didn't have any avenue to say we can lower our market adjustments. So technically, that's, when I finished my analysis, that's when we sent out the notices of value, showing you what your current values are. And then we have the 30-day protest period. Excuse me. I don't talk this much throughout a whole year. My husband would love for me to lose my voice, so ask lots of questions and give him what he wants. So anyway, once those values are set, we have to send them out to everybody. And then you have 30 days within when you can protest that value. I'm not gonna lie to you. That process is grueling. So basically, what happens in that protest period is I have to send you out the analysis that I used to come to your value. It's, and the math about that is, is to take, obviously, the inventory of the house. We use Marshall and Swift cost tables, which is statewide. It's a Department of Revenue choice. And it determines a replacement cost-new-less depreciation value of your property. And then we apply the market adjustment to that value, and that is what the market value is for assessment purposes. Does it work for every property in the county? Absolutely not. We have properties that actually sold for less than I have them valued at. But because it is mass appraisal, I can't go in and just adjust a single piece of property. Once that market adjustment is determined, it is applied to everybody throughout that neighborhood. Granted, we do have extensions, sometimes older homes. We have to have the higher market adjustments because they depreciate out faster. So I can't put a brand spanking new house in at the same as some of my older homes because it would overvalue. Sometimes that works. Sometimes that market adjustment can be the same. It just depends on the sales in the area and what the replacement costs are. So once you start that protest procedure, then I send you out the sales that I used in that area. Again, they're not exact comps to your property. It's just, this was my assessment area. These were the sales in that area. This was the market adjustment that I had to apply to get to a median of .90 to 1.10, which is a Department of Revenue requirement in every assessment area. I didn't realize I talked so much.
That's okay.
You're doing great.
So anyway, this is the interesting thing. Senator Doc Stater, please don't take this back or I'll get in trouble. This Department of Revenue requires us to be between .90 and 1.10 on every assessment area in the county. And they do audit me, and I do have to be there. Otherwise, they will come in and say, "You need to fix that." The state requires me, the State Board of Equalization requires me to be between .95 and 1.05. So if I stay on the low side, the .90 in every single assessment area, I'm not gonna make the state requirement. There's no way that I can be at .95 if every area is at .90. So we try to balance out. We stay as low as we can within each area, but we know we've still gotta step up and meet a state level. And I get audited by the Department of Revenue every year, and I get audited by the State Board every year. And then I have to try to also be right with you people to try to keep your values as low as possible but keep the state from coming in and setting the values. Because if they come in, they're gonna go higher. Because my median this year didn't make it. It's .93. But I will win the State Board hearing. I hope. So that is basically what my office does, is we have to set value for assessment purposes. We have to meet all the Department of Revenue requirements. And we have to pass the State Board hearing because they do have the right to equalize a county if you're not in compliance. So I don't know if I answered your math questions. We start at replacement cost-new-less depreciation, which is based on many factors of your home, your size, your age, your quality. If you have a basement, if it's finished, if you're, what heating type, what roof type. There's just, your plumbing, your, I mean, there's many, many factors that go into that. And then, once we determine that, then we compare it to a sales price, determine our market adjustment, and apply it.
Why the difference between the Department of Revenue and the state? The .90, 1.1, 1.1?
You wouldn't have to ask them that because I ask them all the time. I don't make those decisions. That's just the Department of Revenue writes the rules.
They didn't tell you when you asked? Or you didn't ask?
I do ask. What's that?
Can you continue, just keep your voice?
I'm trying. I'm really trying. I just don't want to completely lose it either. So basically, the Department of Revenue wrote the rules at the .90 to 1.10, which is basically what the International Assessors Association requires. International Association of Assessing Officers. And then the State Board has always, since I've been in office, which is a long time, has always been at .95 to 1.05. Point 95. Okay, so basically, when I get done with all my values, and what they do is they look at the sold properties. And what, my comparison to my, my value compared to the sold properties, that ratio has to be between the median of it. I will have some that are higher and some that are lower. Has to be at least .95 to 1.05. They also have statistics that, like, my coefficient of dispersion. I can't be valuing my higher homes way too low and my older homes way too high. So there's other factors that they look at to make sure that I'm in balance, even if I'm in that ratio. So there's, there's these different factors that they look at to make sure that I'm not treating one type of property any different than another. So there's different factors that I have to be in. But it has that state, county, county-wide, you have to be .95 to 1.05.
Do they determine what you look at on a property to up that value? That is, because I got assessed for a playhouse. I mean, I've got assessed for a shed. Can't you have discretion in that?
No.
Why not?
Because it's the Department of Revenue rules and regulates. The county assessors literally administer the system as it's set before them by the Wyoming State Legislature and the Department of Revenue. The legislature determines the value, the system, which is market value. The Department of Revenue writes the rules that govern what we do. And I have, basically, I mean, they've sent us memos that said, "If it's a shed on skid, you better have it on file." And they come into my, they audit us every year. And they'll come in and they'll pick out certain properties. And they'll go in the system, and they've even gone out in the field to make sure that we have the inventory on file correct. Is it all right? We don't want to, we want to keep...
Hold on to those questions. We want to hear everybody.
Well, for now. So I think it's really hard. That's a great overview.
Can you introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah, I'm Dan O'Brien. I'm a homeowner. I have some background in property tax.
Please, not for you.
I'm Dan O'Brien. And I'm a homeowner, and I have some background in property tax and a lot of background in finance. So what I want to respond to is what can we do? Very difficult to hear a ratio and make any sense. What does that mean to me? So Debbie gave a great overview. It starts with mass assessment. Lots of homes. Then there is a replacement cost value minus depreciation. That's math. In my view, the county should be able to show us the math for our property. My house, it's 15 years old. My neighbor's, it's one-year-old. That's math. No ratios needed. Right? So now let's get to the next part. Actual sale prices. So we all should know what a house sells for that's in our neighborhood. Compare it. Is it newer? Is it older? What's the shape, size, square footage? Those are all facts that are relevant for us as a homeowner to know and to assess because it's pretty simple math. Show me the math work. Like, how did you calculate this? So that's one ask that we have. The process that we have in our county, when I filed a protest, I was asked to sign a non-disclosure agreement. Yeah, I take umbrage with that. Absolutely.
Can I speak to that?
I'll be, I'm finished in two minutes. They have all the data. They can talk about ratios. The data that we should have is sale price, depreciation, replacement value. We have homes in this county that cannot be insured for the replacement value that's been calculated. And we're gonna demonstrate that. And we're gonna demonstrate that through appeal. So there is math here. It's a huge job that they have, not diminishing it. They're total professionals. But we need to be informed. The only way for me and you to be informed is for me to give you my assessment, which I have done. I've said, "Anybody wants my assessment? You can have my assessment." "You want my analysis? You can have my analysis." But what I can't do is I can't take any of the information I get from the county and share it with you. I'm prohibited from doing that. Doesn't feel right to me. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
And the other point that I've discussed with Dan, you know, luckily, I'm a Realtor. So I get to run comparative market analysis all day long. A lot of you don't get that dynamic. And I think what's really, really difficult is I, I pull that data for people that ask me, but it's not readily available. me, but it's not readily available. So like when I filed my value protest, I then have to justify exactly what my market value is. And so that doesn't match what my assessed. Now granted, again, we need to remember, assessed value is different than market value. State statute, your assessed should be lower than your market value. Come last September, and I don't want to speak, we have other Realtors here, September into now, we shifted, June even, we shifted. So what's really, really difficult to hear is that this is going to take a year and a half to catch up. So I think that's where, and again, I get where Debbie is tied with certain statutes, but our statutes are broken. The fact that we sign a confidentiality agreement when we file a value protest feels so odd to me. I feel like data should be free flowing. If, if Governor Gordon is all about transparency, I think we've got, yeah. And so, and I want to give all of, yeah, and I want to give everyone a chance to speak. So sorry to digress, but I just want to give you that dynamic going on and then I'll let Debbie.
Shay, don't take this wrong.
I won't.
But this is a non-disclosure state by Wyoming State statute. The assessors do not promote that. We want it to be a disclosure state. The entity that goes and lobbies against that every time it comes up is the real estate because they don't want those sales out there. Then people can start doing their own research and selling their own property. That's not Shay. That's not, I mean, that's not, it is a group that goes and lobbies in Cheyenne. So understand that that's not my decision not to disclose. That is by Wyoming State statute, we are a non-disclosure state.
So if we're a non-disclosure state, how is the mass appraisal getting access to the non-disclosed sales prices?
So when a person.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, I got the, oh, I got the question.
Yeah, repeat the question for the people at home.
Go for everybody.
So basically, what she wants to know is where do I get my information if it's a non-disclosure state? When you file a deed and you sell your property, you have to file a statement of consideration saying what you sold it for. That information comes to my office, but it is not divulged to the public. Like Mr. O'Brien has filed a protest, so I had to make sure that he knew. That's why he signed in that statement, that he cannot go divulge that information because it's, once you file a protest, you are entitled to that information, but it's only to be, to be talked about at the county board hearings. It does not become public just because he filed a protest. So that's why he had to file.
By the way, no individual homeowner's information is disclosed in the information you provided.
What's that?
No individual homeowner's information is disclosed in the information you provided to me. Outside of yours.
You mean like the sales?
Yeah, the sales.
Okay, so I'm Mr. O'Brien, and I mean, I get what he's saying. Basically, we, I provided him some information, but I haven't been able to get everything out that he wants, which is, I mean, I respect that.
Yes.
And I will get that to him because he is in a protest. But because we had so many people like request information and file protests, I'm just trying to answer everybody as quick as I can and then getting back with the people that are actually going to a hearing with more information. So I'm not trying to avoid giving it to you. I just haven't had time. There's only so many nights and weekends besides the, and we're still trying to do our job at the office. It doesn't end just because you're a protest period. Phones are still ringing, people are still mad. So we're doing the best we can to get as much information out to people as possible. He will, I mean, I've got more information than I will get to Mr. O'Brien. But understand that the disclosure is a Wyoming State statute. It's not the choice of my office. I would love to just throw this, in fact, this year, I basically, if people didn't inquire, I listed. I didn't, couldn't give details on sales, but I showed the sales, our value, what the median was, so that they could see, we were low. We were just very simply low.
Okay.
The mass appraisal, what dates to use? Can you give that? The date ranges?
We do 2022 sales for 23 values.
Okay, so from January 1st, 2022 to the end.
Yep.
So starting June of last year, the market shifted.
Not based on our values compared to the sale prices. And I put out a 12-month thing. Our median did not start to go above, our values did not start to go above the sale prices clear into December.
When you say you put out, that's what you put out for public record?
Well, those were people that signed the statements of consideration, called into the office, and I could provide that information to because we are non-disclosure.
The mass appraisal company, are they a Wyoming company?
Marshall and Swift is, is the cost company that we use, but they're nationwide.
Debbie, can I, you left one thing out. Under 39, I don't have my glasses, 13102. If you don't have them sign that non-disclosure, if you give our information out, you're guilty of a misdemeanor and a fine of $1,000. It's a crime, right?
Yes.
I think.
That's why they have to sign it.
And you should be arrested to state law.
Yeah, but I, well, kind of like Debbie, she goes to jail, it's okay.
Hey, at least I get three squares and nobody yells at me.
For a small fee.
So what happens? Who enforces if he does disclose?
Well, I, I mean, gosh, I don't know. You, you, I don't want to rat him out, but don't go do it.
Well, I'm just curious if somebody.
If they disclosed and I knew about it, I, I would probably have to report them. But I have not had that happen and I don't want that to happen. That's why I am very specific that I will not give you sales information unless you sign that form. And you are well aware of what will happen if you disclose. That's why he signed it.
Okay, I want to stay on track because I think all of you understand, either you value protested or you did not. So at this point, yeah, quick question?
I think one of the bases, what they base their taxes on is true.
Well, that's what we want to get to.
Market price is irrelevant. I don't think anybody in this room bought a home, got a mortgage, thinking, well, okay, next year we're going to sell this house more. No, we're in it for the long haul. But every year goes up based on market value. I don't have any intention of selling anything ever. And yet every year, I get to participate with my neighbors who want to develop or get in on the deal.
Yeah.
And I think it's totally unfair that my taxes keep going up based on what somebody else wants to do, not what I.
Yeah, and this is.
I actually called the county assessor office in Bend, and the girl said, I said, I'm not developing. I'm still farming this for the last 130 years. She said, well, you could have developed.
I mean, that, I, yeah. I mean, and I'll be honest, what, what we're hoping, and I'm glad Senator Doc Stittler's here, the main goal is they need to amend the Constitution. We need a Prop 13. I hate to say that, California, but they got it right. So I think, I think at the end of the day, and this is my mantra, you shouldn't fault your neighbor for having a windfall that could be their retirement. Your property tax should stay as it is. That's what you budgeted for.
I'm a man.
We, yeah, but, yeah.
Not the guy that sold.
No, exactly. So the point is, I think what you need to hear is the state has to amend the Constitution. We can't, we, I mean, I wrote all January and February, but there's only so much, we all have to push. Really, this is a night for the commissioners to say, how do we get mill levies lowered by asking these districts to lower their budgets? So really, what we want you to see and what I want to give the commissioners time now to explain. So we have, this is your grand total of mill levy money. Then we can go into special districts. So you guys can see each special district, what they're getting, how much the hospital's getting, how much the school board's getting. Again, the biggest thing you need to understand, a mill levy is not to exceed this amount. It can go lower. What I don't know from the commissioners is how much can they lower it? That's where we have got to request telling these districts, you need to pull your budget back. So I'll let them.
And just so you know what you're looking at, this is the 2022 completed mill levy report. Everybody can access this. Debbie has put it up on the Wyoming Assessment webpage. So that's where we pulled this information up from. Yes, really quick.
Do you have the difference between the previous year and this year, just so we can?
I'll quote some of that if I can get a chance to talk long enough.
Yeah, I know. Good. No, that's a great question. We've been trying to go five years back, so great question. We're going to dig into that. We just wanted to show you 2022.
If I may, can you hear me in the back now?
Yeah.
Okay. One misconception about taxes, especially this county, is very glaring in one thing. In 2013 and 12, we cut the mill levy to 11.2. We have done it about 13 or 14 times. And I'm almost guaranteed, there's nobody in this room would have said or be willing to say to me that they knew that. Okay? So we have done it when we can. How do we do that? It's really simple. Okay? In 2012, for example, your mill levy at that point was 11.2. We took eight tenths off it, which we figured we could do because of what's going on with the economy. And I'll get into the economy especially hard here in a minute. The bottom line, your assessed valuation was $911 million then. This year's, 10 years later, is $927 million. You are packing a bigger load of it because houses has come up. And Marty knows this well, so he argues with me a lot. It has to get into who's packing the load of the mill levy, okay? Big business packs it in this county. You have one taxpayer that pays $11 million a year, 11.3. Five companies in the South pay the bulk. And so these raisin drops that I'm showing you, and you know, Marty, what I'm talking about, we really don't have that much more money today than we did back in 2012. Because the very next year, in 2014, we had to go back to 12 when your assessed valuation dropped to 788 in a crash. The crash that's causing you the biggest heartburn and the gentleman's question of why is it keep going up? You're proportionate. This is the sheet that puts all the taxes into focus force. This is just a preliminary. And we don't even get to set it in no solid numbers until like two or three days before we set the budget, just because of this appraisal system. But in 1913, 14, I just told you, the one before, the year before was 911 million was the assessed. That year was 788. That relates to two $3 million drop, and industry is where it drops. Number three unit, the Rocky Mountain Power just tried to shut down on us. We got the natural gas cost in this county $3 million. So why weren't we climbing like your taxes are climbing? Industry got killed by a president. I'm a Republican, so don't think I'm going to back off in this statement. The president administration, 6,000 oil and gas wells that aren't being drilled mean a boatload to this county. And that's the bottom line. The gas and oil, not only that, but the coal's your biggest taxpayer. $11.3 million out of a $21 million budget, okay? That's the hard numbers we have to deal with. Your assessed valuation is up this year. It is up over a billion for the second time. But the highest it has ever been in the history of this county is 2010, at 1.2 billion, okay? We lowered it to 11.2 that year also. So we have done that when the opportunity, you're looking at commissioners and people at this table to get what you're arguing about. I just come out of the legislature with Senator Doc Stittler. And Mr. Bowers can back me up because I'm called a liar on this. And Lane was there to go with me. 23 counties, 20 of them voted no on tax cuts. 20 out of 23. You want to know a lobby that whipped them down there? The Wyoming County Commissioners Association. I say this in meetings, you, some of you people have heard me say it before, when she, somebody, I think Shay said, we need your help to make something happen. People in the room I was in when that conversation was going on, they were telling me, I barely got elected on this taxes issue. So what did I do? I voted no against the tax breaks. 23 bills, I believe 71 were entered. If there was a year that this should have got done, this was probably it. My conversations with these two gentlemen who are fighting for you, understand that. This part of the state gets it, okay? If you want tax relief, it's got to come from the tax legislature. Because I just told you what your total, right now, we're going to probably have a million dollars extra to spend from last year before, not extra. That's how much it's going to go up in what we would get for revenue, what we spend, what you're looking at. There are districts in this county that do not mail their full. And the system works very simply. They make a request, it comes before us, and when we have to pass it, we have to look at each mill levy and pass it separately. Okay? We pass them as a group, as we do it in between there. But you have some that only do point two. You have cemetery districts, but the problem with it is, somebody will tell me, Jackson does this. Don't ever compare yourselves to Jacksons, okay? They have zero minerals. In other words, their housing is packing the total tax. Is it hurting because your taxes and your houses are picking a bigger load of what I just quoted you on the total assessed evaluation? But if we drop a mill that we've been asked, Mr. Bowers gets asked, Mr. Hanson, if we drop a one mill, that is a million dollars we will take off. Okay? That's what it would drop us in revenue that we had to spend to do services. And we are bound by law also to provide certain services. Senior centers, ambulances, and fire are not part of that. So where do you think we would have to cut? I'll try to get to you, ma'am, in a minute. I remember you, okay? The bottom line to it is, you do have some people that are being very prudent in what they're doing. Your cemetery districts, for example, up here, cut themselves down, it's a tight, they had to come to us to want us to dig graves. Teton County, because when they cut their mill levy, I got requests to pay for their 4H program. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I am not going to pay for anything in Lincoln County. I may only vote one to nothing, but I don't think these two will vote against me. And so dropping a mill levy, even in Teton County, has got consequences. And those consequences usually come in human services that you lose. But that total tax load, remember what I told you? This total tax load, this year, we aren't keeping up with inflation. You aren't keeping up in inflation. We get that. We absolutely get it. And if you ask me for my take on it, the senator knows this and Lane knows this for sure, I wanted to push the 2019 cap, okay? Which says it doesn't go up, it stays there, especially if you retain your home and go. Would that have an effect on us? Absolutely. But if you want us to be able to take a hard look and be able to do it, and don't forget, your previous commission put, when you say we took mill 12 mills, they set aside of that 12 mills $500,000. We were one of the first counties, give them credit, for funding it on our own. And the state did it this year. This county did it upfront last year. That's why he was able to start the program. So that is what, you just take the mill levy, whatever we got out of it, and they put $500,000 aside to drop it down. It is hard to do. I think you're, ma'am, the one that said, you know, how you qualify. It's tough to qualify, okay? And getting a rebate on a pass when you lose it doesn't happen because you can't do it. And so I hope I've run a little clarity into the assessed and what it means. Remember, it's a total tax load. This page is, is two pages long of what we collect on different things, okay? And what we totally have, we don't have, we have not kept up with inflation. When I had a conversation with Representative Heiner down from where I'm at, I live in Kemmer, and I asked him, I'll come to you, sir, just give me a minute. And I said to him, he says, you should have plenty of money. Your assessed valuation's up. And I says, excuse me, we're still digging out of the same hole you are in a recession, and we're still digging out of those same holes, like I just showed you in there. Is it up this year from last year in your year behind? Remember this, the highest one I told you, 2010, if you look it up on the books everywhere else, that was a recession year. That was because in 2009 is where it come across. And I hope I've made some clarity in that. Our total amount of money that we have to, have to deal with in how we keep these things funded, and we're, okay, one of the hardest things we had to do this last week, we've put through emergency funding for senior centers to have enough food to feed the elderly. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we will do that, okay? Because, and so we've got to look at our hard things like that. You are in a recession in the rest of this state. What's going on in the development down there? There's a reason the senator and Lane and all of us are, we're not around much because we're right in the middle of this thing, and you have got a friend in Harriet Hagaman, okay? This lady fights. And so, the lady was here first. I'll give her the floor first.
So am I hearing, what I'm hearing from you is what has happened in the oil and gas industry and has affected this state and it's kind of really directly affected assessed money? We're, we don't have enough money, so we got to get.
The largest taxpayers you have are ad valorem taxes on mineral. You're a mineral state. You're based on it. You're the, you have world-class businesses. This county is home to the world's largest helium producer, world's largest cracking plant in, in natural oil and gas. So that's big, but don't forget, when I told you, the coal mine is 11.3. You're, you're talking to somebody that lobbies 24/7 to keep coal in there. Coal keeps the lights on here. Because you'll tell me the water does here? Guess where 50% of your power comes from? It's called Bridger Coal Fired Power Plant in Rock Springs, okay? And so that's, that assessed part, if you want us to give us a chance at lowering the main mill levy, we need the mineral taxes back. Because when I'm quoting you these dates back through here, that's what, when that mine was rolling. That 4 million tons of coal down there is worth a lot of money, okay, in assessed evaluation. And it is, coal and oil and gas are the reason why you have no state income tax. Don't ever forget that, okay? Sir, please.
I'm a bottom-line kind of guy. And using 2021 as a base, my taxes this year are 160% of what they were in 2021. A 60% increase is outrageous.
That's why you have to figure out a cap or like the senator will speak of on into there. The system, I don't think anybody will disagree with me, whether you agree with me what I'm saying or not. The system's broke, okay? Because I just walked out of a meeting with a whole bunch of ranchers, fifth and sixth generations that are worried about going down. Ag gets an exemption, okay? But is it working? No. There's components of this. We've been long enough at this in there. This inflationary factor of who's coming in like the Star Valley, I watched this, when I talked to Mayor Green and going through what he's got going on up here and stuff back and forth, and I've been in here talking to him, you've got, you have got, this is a total tax load problem, okay? That's what this is. It's a total tax load. So part of what they were saying over here, you know, get the mill levy, we just don't car blance say, because like I say, you have some cemetery districts that are down, you have, I live in an area that because of that coal, where I live, where I have a local fire district, your fire districts up here were created because they needed three mills to function. And remember, the state doesn't give me money for them, okay? I was part of the group that said, you need a fire district up here for that reason. And I was either the good guy or the bad guy on that, and good guy, bad guy, and fain for the same reason, okay? But where I'm at, my fire department mills point three of three mills, just point three is all it mills, okay? So you have that kind of stuff that's going on already. So it's not a total picture that this is all 12, three, one, or whatever in between. And so in hospitals, big load, but the number one big one is 43 mills for schools, 27 of it right to your local district. And they are required by the law to mill that. And the main reason came from the Wyoming State Legislature. It's called recapture. I live in a district, because of that hide on their leg, how they can do, a million dollars comes out of my school district, and my wife almost got laid off out of the school because of it. Star Valley's the recipient of that. It's called the Robin Hood Bill Prospect. So if you lower too many mill levies, will they look at a Robin Hood method and do it? As far as I know, there's only two other counties that lower. Teton ridiculously, what how they do it. I mean, but I just told you what they're asking us to do, okay? Campbell County, they've actually had to go, they are the king of coal. 420 million tons. They can tell you coal's going away. 420 million ton leads the nation. It was a whopping 480 before, but coal's not going anywhere. It's going to be used for other things. Our push right now is to try to get that back, like I just told you. Compared to what we had to spend in 2012, 2013, it's the total load. And the part that hurts you, sir, is the fact that you're packing a bigger load. And Marty, you and I have had major conversations over this over time. And so what do we do about it? We need to keep industry. We need to keep people in Washington that fight for us. You have a president that is attacking this state in our very lifestyle. And I don't say that lightly. Because we get to sit on the end and watch this develop and watch it take place. 6,000 wells is what they complained about. Jonah Field is the world's largest natural gas producer. The Williams Turn Hub that is home to this county. $1 rise in the natural gas prices is $100 million in revenue to this state. You want to help taxes statewide, you want to help in this county? Get us our industry back. And that's what we're fighting for, okay? And I know I'm making an industry pitch. I come from industry, I'm a coal miner. That also makes me a little mouthy. And so, but I'll get over that. And so, but I, I, I hope, because you were walking around some of these different subjects.
Very, very helpful insight and depth overview, however.
Well, one thing before I finish, please let me finish.
Okay, yes, I thought you were, sorry.
What she can't give you by law? These budgets that I have in front of me have been on our website. You can go to our website and you can find what my salary is, okay? You can find out all this stuff on our website, and we find most people don't go look it up there. They'll call us up and say, you have to give me this or that. It's available on the website. And we actually have people that'll walk you through on it. And we post the budget in there, we have a budget hearing, I'll come to you sir. And just give me a minute. And the bottom line to it is, there is this massive volume of information that attaches to it. We just understand that, that total load, when we sat down to do this budget, we'll go line by line, everything through it down through it and through there. And inflation's eating us alive. I mean, I'm preaching to the choir telling you what inflation's doing to you right now. You want to get your price of gas down? We sat down with the oil and gas people. You lift that drilling ban and Drill Baby Drill, we'll pull it down to $2 a gallon, I'm going to guarantee you in six months. And this is the state that can do that. Yes, I got a man over here first, then I'll come back to you, okay? Sir? No, behind you, sir.
Why don't we do homestead, non-homestead? Other states I lived in, I'm getting penalized. I pay for these people that's got three, four, five houses. They don't show up in a year. But I live here and I'm worried about it. And they're paying the same.
What's that?
It's like the homestead in Florida. If you're a full-time resident, I don't know, it's 100,000? I don't want to miss close.
It's 3% a year.
Yeah, so that's what it is. So it just, it helps locals keep their property tax a little lower.
And the other states you're quoting, they have personal tax on it.
Well, that's why I live here.
Yeah.
And I've lived in other states too, but you have homestead, non-homestead. It's like a 30% increase on their tax. I don't care, because they can afford the multiple homes. I can afford this one. This is where I live. I'll go down to Florida, I'll go to Nevada, and stuff like that, but I want to live here.
And these are ideas for the state legislature?
Yeah.
Okay, I had a hand in the back and I don't, you're right ma'am. I should be in trouble for getting this.
Well, I was just thinking that each area that takes out taxes, every one of them should be audited. Every single one of them. And see what, you know, boot out all the things that are extras that are really not needed. That's the bottom line.
The audit's available.
The other thing is that I know in other areas of the country that there's people that have been living in their homes for years and their taxes have not increased because they are grandfathered in. There's people here that have been here for centuries. They're ranchers, they're landowners, they've lived here for a long time. They know how to care for the land. And I think that Wyoming should set the standard with oil and gas and march 2022. Yeah, I'm all for environmental causes and making our land clean and all that. That's not the answer to, the answer is not windmills and the answer isn't greening up everything. Yes, we need to be stewards for the land, but we need to have oil and gas. And our state of Wyoming is founded on those principles. We are free to do what we want to do. And we should set the standard. Then the country will look to us and they'll say, it's very good. We like what you've done. You've lowered the taxes. We like, we like the freedom you have. And I'm saying, go.
Let me just mention that, that we do have an audit done every year. And it is available for you to go through at, it's about this thick, and you're welcome to it.
Okay, one other thing is that we, I know for ourselves, we almost doubled our taxes where we live. I want to have everybody stand up that has almost doubled their taxes.
So for a moment, let's think about, let's think about what that means in this room. Let's think about what that means in this room. In this room, we have over 100 people who showed up today. Thank you. That's a million dollars to $2 million of increased property taxes we are paying. Mill levies, very complicated. It was a great explanation, most of it over my head. The challenge is, we can't do anything about that other than help. Perhaps legislate, lobby in the State House. What we can do is make sure our numbers are right.
Commissioner, let's try to get it back to the people that we invited to speak here. So let's let them speak. Commissioner, do you have more to say?
I just wanted to mention, if I could, that, let's say you have a million-dollar home, for instance, and you have a one-mill drop, if it was to go from 12 to 11, the portion that the county commissioners have some say over, you'd see about a $95 savings on your tax bill. But Commissioner Conley mentioned how much industry packs our services in Lincoln County. And you'd see, on a billion-dollar industry, you'd see about $115,000 lost in tax revenue because that tax break could be going to industry. And so that substantially impacts the budget and the services like Commissioner Conley was saying. So just take that, if you have a million-dollar home, or if you have a $500,000 home, just split it in half. And like Assessor Larson said, you've got different tax rates. One's at 9.5% for, that includes residential, and 11.5% for industry. So just clarification.
Well, remember, I said the mine, the coal mine itself, 11.3 million that they pay, that would roughly depend on how we did it, 600,000 off of them. At times, could they use it to stay in business? Very possibly so. But your commissioners have always felt, and this goes way, I've been around long enough, doing this long enough. I'm telling you right now, if you wanted to pull up these history sheets and your clerk can give them to you, it's going to show you the number of years we were under 12. Okay, so we were willing to do that, trying to give it back to the people, so we could hold it down ourselves. But I'm going to tell you right now, I'm a firm believer the big business should be paying the taxes and you shouldn't. And so that's, you want to know why that decision-making process falls that way? That's the logic, and like I said, last year's commission. 500,000 comes out of that pot, goes into the rebate program, which Jerry administers in there. That, we didn't have to do that. It's already in this proposed budget right now. We're in the process of doing the budget right now. It is not set. We'll be going through it line by line, like I said. And so that is already in there. We will fund that and what the state helped. That bill was the one bill that got passed that nobody voted against, literally. You know, it came right through, they increased that amount and how you did it. But it's not terribly easy to do or qualify for. And I'm going to say this very loudly. Make sure your neighbors that really need it do it, because we don't see a lot of the people that really need it doing it. I mean, this is a pride thing, okay? When you can't do it, and I'll get real in this conversation. If you know of somebody that needs help, they're not talking to us. Okay? And so that's still part of this economy. And when I say the rich are getting richer and the poor are getting poorer, those are absolutely accurate statements, what we get to watch. Like I say, we've got to cut checks for food at senior centers and we've got to check. These are emergency fundings that we go into. In the county, so you know to operate, we are the top of the food chain, okay? When it floods, we don't have a flood account from the state. We have to pick up that bill. And if some disaster happens in your county, we are the top of the food chain. And will we go do stuff sometimes that people wonder, why did those idiots do that? We save kids, we save people. That's still one of our number-one things, we have to have enough money to do. And so please do keep that in the back of your mind. It's like, somebody will ask me, you know, what's your reserve? Well, guess what? And when you pay your taxes, you don't like to have to pay them all at once. So we have to float between when you pay and come back and forth. So we have to keep somewhere around 12 to 13, 14 million dollars so that we can, it's like a balance in your checkbook. What's going to take you through the month? Well, we have to make it through the year. And so, and that's how the mills and all that system works. And if you, really simple on it in there, if you want to know what one mill levy on your house is, whatever she put on it in there, just go .001 and times what is on your house. And that's what it would take off your house.
Really quick, to bring it right back, I know that you talked about the audit. Can we talk a little bit about the audit process? Is it a state auditor that comes in? Is it a third-party auditor? How do you, and when each of the budgets gets submitted, how much time do you get to audit it? Or have there ever been any excesses that you find, that you had to go back and talk to whoever was submitting the budget? Just want to learn a little bit more about how that auditing process happens.
The auditors basically come in and review all the books in through there. And then we depend on each entity, we tell them, our entities that we claim, Fair Board, you know, those others in there. We don't do their audit for them. But they have to, by law, those are recorded in Debbie's office, excuse me. April's office.
I will only take blame for my part.
In the court's office.
I knew I screwed up when I missed that. I knew I screwed up. And so, so that transparency and what we look at in there. But quite frankly, we know pretty well, when we're watching, well, number one, if I got a cemetery district coming in to me telling me we can't dig graves, I don't really have to look at their audit very hard, I'm going to be honest, okay? I mean... Yes, exactly. And so that's part of the district laws. And so we depend on the state. We pay 80 to 100,000 dollars a year for an audit, okay? This is not no poor man's audit, okay? And so, and the state, we try to make sure they do their job, like Marty just pointed out, okay? And so that's part of the system that we should be able to depend on the state for, okay? And if somebody comes and claims somebody's done malthesis, and we've had to have trouble with different things from time to time.
Yeah.
And that's all there is to it. You know, you get embezzlement every once in a while, unfortunately. And we've had to deal with those kind of things. So don't think there isn't a watchful eye going on over the money. There's three houses of government for a reason. Most people don't realize this. You've got the county commissioners who set up in the county commission boardroom. And it comes down to the treasurer's office and the clerk's office. There is not a check signed in this county that doesn't come to the three houses of government. That's the process. And the state works the same way. We are bound by state rules. We answer to the Wyoming State Legislature. You elect us, but our rules and what we do is set by the Wyoming State Legislature. And so that's very important to understand in this process, okay? Does that make any sense at all?
And Jones, Jones?
She's so patient. I worked as a town clerk for 20 years, and I worked in a senior center. And so I got to see a lot of these special districts and what they required for budgets. None of these budgets were audited by the county. I told the commissioners several times, I told the commissioners several times that they needed to have receipts sent in on what the money was spent on. Because I seen a lot of things that were for wants, not needs. And I seen a lot of money that was hid in savings accounts that was not declared to commissioners.
I wasn't a commissioner.
And so I, and I told, I told the commissioners over and over that they needed to audit that or else have a receipt sent in, what the money was spent on for that quarter. And I might be in trouble for saying this, but I seen a lot of money that was spent very frivolously.
Well, I won't try to keep myself completely out of trouble here, but I can tell you what? In my 17 years as a commissioner, we've had to take charges against four senior senators for embezzlement. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to answer anymore on that.
I know about that, I do know about that. But you still need to find out what fire departments were spending their money on, what EMTs were spending their money on, and what's, what the senior centers. Because a lot of it is wants and not needs. And they have more money that they're, that they've got in savings accounts than what they're declaring to you guys. So that needs to be addressed, because there is not an audit done from you guys on these entities.
I can tell you what, the ones I look at, I know what's in their savings account.
No, you don't. You were a commissioner when I was a clerk, and you don't.
Well, I want to get, did you have anything, Mr. Greenfield, as far as the refund?
Yes.
Would you like to talk about that?
You know what, also, we want to be, you guys came out. Are there any other questions? Yeah. Okay, we'll just start going down.
Well, hey Shay, don't you think we should let the, press the table?
Yeah, you're right, you want to finish that?
Yeah, then we'll get back to the questions, so.
Okay. So then we'll go, we'll get quickly to questions.
Let's quit the rambling.
Can we hear from the state senator?
Yeah.
Go to the tax refund and then I'll speak.
Yeah. So we're going to speak to the tax refund really quickly.
You can do it from right there.
Okay, I'm going to try to speak up as loud as I can, I've had a voice issue.
Let me try to bring people in. Anybody that wants to come in, there's still some room over here, there's a couple seats. If for any reason you can't hear, please come in now, or you can listen online.
Yeah, there's only so loud, there's just so loud I can get, sorry to say. My wife appreciates this though, at the end of the day. I want to thank the assessor and the commissioners and Senator Docstetter for being here, simply because when this was originally talked to me about, it was about me coming and talking to you about property tax refund. But after looking at the emails that I got, we figured out real quickly there was a lot of issues. And that's, it was my idea to pull and invite these people here. And I really appreciate them coming and addressing everything. They're not afraid to address anything. I feel Lincoln County is very transparent. Before I get into the tax refund issue, I'd like to address one more thing. And that's the fact that we were talking about audits. Now, special districts are supposed to do audits, get audits done. And senior citizens really are, is not a special district. And maybe we should be covering that under the county audit that we have done by a private firm that comes in and does an audit. But at the end of the day, that's going to cost you a little more money, and maybe it's money that we need to spend. It was, it's good to hear that people has concerns about this. And this is something that I think that the commissioners really has listened to and I hope will address. So with that being said, I want to also address Senator Docstetter. There were 38 bills and files that was before the House and the Senate for property tax refund issues. And Senator Docstetter was one of several. Sorry, it wasn't enough to try to get money, more money back to the citizens, to the people that paid the taxes. And it was very disgusting for me to hear and see and watch, because you can watch the actions taking place in the House and the Senate on your computers, which I do it. And it was disgusting to see that these things, some of them didn't even get pulled out of the drawer. Some of them just flat got turned down in a heartbeat. Senator Docstetter fought tooth and nail to get these passed. The one thing that he did get done, and that's this property tax refund issue that we're going to talk about. But one more thing about Senator Docstetter, just remember, he is one of many in that whole group. We need to help, we need to step up. All of us people need to support what Senator Docstetter is trying to do. You need to pay attention to the different things that he brings to the table and support it in every way we can. And the only way I can figure out to support it, I contact other House members and other senators and tell them, get off your butt and vote yes. Don't sit there and vote no. You know, let's help the people. That's what we're, that's what we're all here for. I'm a county treasurer only because I wanted to be able to help people. I was a banker. That means that I was in the rape, pillage and plunder process in my life. But I changed and I become a politician to try to help the people. So I want you to know that I'm very pleased with what I see in Senator Docstetter's issues. The other thing is, is there are some things that are mandated. School districts, for example, and it was addressed a little bit. And that's the fact, they cannot lower their mill levy. And to really be effective, we need to be able to lower the mill levy across the board. Now, the mandate takes it a step further. It's called a recapture. I think Commissioner Conley called it Robin Hood? It's appropriate. But, and that's there for a reason, because there are some counties that can't afford to fund their own school districts. So they take the money from us, from, out of your pockets and fund somebody else. Is that fair? It doesn't feel fair, does it? It doesn't seem fair to me. I don't know what the answer is, but I think Senator Docstetter can work on that and we can figure this out and do a better job. But anyway, there is a tax refund issue before you. The state does one, and the applications are all due June the 5th. That's coming up pretty soon. I'll go over the requirements in just a second. But the county, also, one of three counties in this state has done a property tax refund issue. The same premises, the same criteria set forth by the state. I brought a bunch of applications, if people want applications, see me after this meeting and I'll be glad to give you anything you want. I will leave a bunch with the town of Alpine. So if you don't want to talk about it now, or come and pick them up now, you can pick them up through the town of Alpine. So the primary criteria starts with, starts with income. And in the past, it was like 80% of the median. And this year, it got raised 125% of the median, which means that if your income is less than $95,163, that's the first part of your qualification. The second part is...
Is it taxable income?
No, it's your gross income.
Gross?
Yes. So...
It's really be taxable, and that brings it up. I don't know, when I went, I thought, you know, they plus and that. Found out that they go into, and they do lines, this and that. And they added money that wasn't taxed on my income tax. And they, they took that money and then they had to... wasn't taxed on my income tax, and they, they took that money and then they had to subtract on and this and that. By that time, I just blew that. And I said, well, how about the money that I lost in the stock market? Why, why can't we subtract that? And they said, oh no, we never subtract money. So, so in the...
Yeah, does, does the IRS subtract money?
It's not really a true mark of, of where it starts. They keep adding more money that you have when you are income taxed, but they didn't tax it.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't make the rules in this case.
Why do they do taxable, or I mean, non-taxable?
Non-taxable.
Why don't they?
Why do they do gross and not non-taxable?
Because that's money you have access to in the, and I don't honestly know. The only thing I know is that it's, it's the money that you have made. It's the gross income. And, and the non-taxable is after, the non-taxable is after depreciation and a lot of other things that, that people can subtract from their, from their taxes. So it is based on $95,163. There are two programs. The first one, as I said, is due by June the 5th. The second one is due September the 4th. And that's the county, and that's the one the county does. So, but it, it asks for your maximum income. It asks for a copy of your income tax so they can verify it. Everything else on that form is up to you. If you want to lie about it, that's your problem. If, not mine. It's, it's, it's your conscience. And I know people that have done it, and they have gotten refunds based on lying. Well, if, if they can live a lie, then that's their, that's, that's on them. It's not on me. I'm not gonna verify everything.
It's impressive. You know, it sounds, it sounds like you're, you're almost saying do it to me. I mean...
No, I'm not saying you do it. I'm just saying the facts.
Your gross income I have never seen, ever. It's on a check, it's on the stub. I don't get that money. So why are you taxing us on that?
Again.
You know, like, like, it's like a double whammy here. And, and I want, I want to be the first one to thank the senator for being here. I mean, not the first, but I want to thank him because we cover these things and we don't see a lot. But I want to know what he's gonna do for us, and I know he's gonna speak. Somebody mentioned change the constitution earlier. I think you can help us in that. Or, I don't know.
I'm just a driver.
Thank you for showing up, but we need to know what we can, because it sounds like everything is just gonna be staying the same here.
Well...
And, you know, I can't do this. I mean, $300 in two years on taxes is crazy. And I'm on a fixed income. You know, I bought in 2015, and there's, there's places around me, and they got some money and they're building multimillion dollar homes that lay empty because they can't sell them yet, or there, or nobody bought them yet. And my stuff goes up because of that. They don't assess me for the $100,000 home at the bottom of the hill. You know? They assess me for these, whatever they are, million dollar homes, multimillion dollar homes. So I'd love to know what we can do at a higher level.
Well, that's great. The only problem is, I'm not your assessor. I'm your county treasurer. I'm the bad guy. I collect the money, okay? That's just the way it is. And, and what I'm telling you on a tax refund, that's just the way it is. It's here to help. Matter of fact, if I didn't have other income, I would qualify for this program as your county treasurer. That's how, that's how much I make as a county treasurer. I am considered in this low income area, okay? That's just the way it is. But 90% of the people I talk to make a hell of a lot more money than I do, and I'm very proud of them for doing that. And that's because I'm stupid and I'm still here working as a county treasurer. You know, that's just the way it is. But at the end of the day, there is two programs here, and you can, there's several things in this program. There's no sense in going over them because it'll do nothing but piss you off more. So...
So can the county change it to taxable?
No, the county cannot.
It's state?
We, we adopted the state program and it is the state program. I think it's a fair program for, well, at least wise we're getting something, and there is something for some people, not everybody. Yes?
So, where's this money coming from for the tax refund?
Right out of the pockets of the county commissioner.
No, from you. From you.
How much is this system costing to be able to issue this tax refund?
We really don't, I'll try to quickly answer because it's a new, you know, they're just passing it. And so we put $500,000 aside, and I'm gonna tell you right now, if it takes $750,000, I don't think these two will disagree with me, will fund it. Okay? And so, and so that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. Until we can get a handle on it, we can't sit here and tell you this is what it's gonna be or cost, because it's new. And, and that's why my appeal to you was, if you know somebody, people gotta sign up for it so we know what, what it is, okay? And so that's kind of the precursor. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but we don't know what it is.
You did good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Conley says he doesn't like interrupting. That's not true. He does a great job.
Should we move on to the senator?
Yes.
Yeah, sounds good.
Good evening, everyone. It's going to be a long night. I've gotta leave here and travel all night to Casper to meet with insurance companies across the state. Two of us have been tasked to ask them why they're delaying our insurance reimbursements to our healthcare providers. And some of us get the heavy lift all the time, whether it's property taxes or insurance companies. And so that's, that's when the sun rises, that's what I take on. But this is a priority and it always has been. And if you followed any of my work, you'd know it has been. This is what I call my property tax bible. Goes from 2006 to current. All the pieces of legislation that have been attempted and have failed, not all have failed. Okay, we go into this session. We're at about, he said the number was 30. We're about down to 17. And I said to my leadership and to the House leadership, I said, why aren't we getting something done here? Where do we gotta go? And as I dug deeper, the pushback was, it went into a certain committee to die, and I even called upon the powers of the Republican Party through Marty, gave her an email and said, can you get some folks lined up here to put some pressure on? Because what we were finding, it'd go into this committee and suddenly die or go away. And what it came down to, and, and I love my local governments, I'm not digging out, they said, local governments are pushing back on any reductions. And they said, the education committee, community is really pushing back as well. So what I've done in the meantime is, I'm gonna tell you about these, but I've always, I've already asked for appointments with the leadership of these groups prior to them going into their summer conventions. Because if they're going to push back again, that doesn't help me with my work in the legislature. These are all pieces of legislation. Homestead, everything has been heard. You name it, it's been heard and not accepted. One of the best bills that we had for short term reduction, property tax relief assessment rate reduction, and that takes it down from 9.5 to 8.5% like that. That's a good bill. The Senate passed it. It went over to the committee, got put in a special, went over to the House, got put in a special committee, never to be seen again.
Can we know what special committee it was?
Revenue. Yeah. And, and so, so I, these, this is what I did. This is what I did in the meantime. I had, similar to a property tax 13 bill, it's a, you know, refund. I put that in front of committee. It failed on the Senate revenue because they, I was emphasizing residential, and they said include business. And I said, no, my first task is residential. I said, my people are getting hit hard residentially. I knew about the 40%, the 60%, I'd heard all those. I knew about all this. You're not telling me anything I don't already know, and I'm putting a lot of time into it. That failed. So we brought back something in the final moments, and I teamed up with my friends from Teton County. We are of different political affiliations, but I call Teton and Lincoln the ground zero of property tax issues. And we started talking. They came over and slipped in behind the Senate and started saying, what about this idea or that? And I said, first of all, you gotta be off the Senate floor. You can't talk to me here. Let's go downstairs, and we talked. And I said, let's find a group of good tax lawyers and put something together. And they did. And they brought it up on the House floor, and then I said, we gotta have key people to speak for it, just like I do in the Senate. I ask certain key people to speak for my bills. And I stayed that night. I had a whole busload of Star Valley students over there. I took, I took them into the governor and they shook hands, and it was a big picture deal. And I said, go over to Olive Garden, I'll be over to buy you dinner later. And then I could see the House debate was gonna go on and on. I texted to the teachers, I said, bring me the bill later. I've gotta stay and watch the House debate on this so that I could take it on to the Senate floor. The House passed what we call Senate Joint Resolution 3. It was originally a bill geared towards senior property tax relief. It changed the constitution, and then I would go in and set the parameters as to the amount of money and the age. What we decided to do was literally gut that bill out, use my title, and create a constitutional amendment geared strictly and specifically to residential property. We did it with the right help. We passed it in the House. And all of a sudden, the weight was on my shoulders, we got to take it to the Senate. And that, that group doesn't accept everything at face value. That's, they're seasoned, that, there, there's a reason they're in the Senate. They're a seasoned group of people. So I started working it around the floor, and I could see I didn't have the votes. Went to some of the old crowd and I said, I gotta have you there. I get this from some of, I don't know, Dan, I don't know, Dan. And then I could see people gathering around, one of my favorite, my old Senator Scott, who, who would really influence this bill. I said, Charlie, if I take this bill, strip out just exactly what it does, and put all the fluff out of the way, would you go home, take it to bed with you and look at it? He said, yeah. And so I laid, I got the Vice President to delay it for a day, which was, we're down to the final three days of the legislature. People said, you can't pull off a constitutional amendment and gut it out like that in the final three days? I said, go hide under your desk and watch. Charlie came back the next morning. Our desks have little bookcases out in front of them. I get there about six, he gets there about seven, and came in and he's sitting there, just standing there with his coat next to his desk. Turned around, he saw me peering over the level like that, looking at him. He said, Dan, I'm with you. And that's what I needed to hear. So I got two or three more key people on, and we literally changed the constitution in a vote in the final days. I needed 22 votes. I got 23. I took the bill, ran downstairs to the governor's office, and I said, I need a signature within 24 hours. They agreed. And so we passed what's called Senate Joint Resolution 3, main sponsor Docstetter, lot of help from a lot of people. And it creates a separate residential property tax. Residential property tax. The tricky part is, and the difficult part is, it's not immediate. It'll be on the ballot. When we change the constitution, we have to put it on the ballot for you to consider. So it'll be on the ballot next year, 2024. I strongly urge you to pass that so we can take care of the long-term effects. The system is broken. We need to go in and change the constitution, and this is the start of it. In the meantime, I have filed the property tax release rate reduction with the idea that if the revenue committee doesn't get it up for a revenue bill, committee bill, I will run it individually. And that's a, that's an immediate solution to the problem. And also, I have filed another constitutional amendment that puts a property, that puts a cap on all property values based on the 2019 assessments. That's filed for 2024. And that's, that's where we're at. If you have any questions, I come to your home, just a minute. I come to your homes individually, and if you're uncomfortable with me coming to your home, I meet you at the town halls. I did this this past week, went up to Star Valley Ranch and met someone. I'm harmless if I come to your home. We sit out a lot, we sat out on a lot of front porches and around dining room tables with my property tax bible and gone over things, and I'm happy to do that with you. That's where we're at. I'm sorry for the delay to 2024, but if we're gonna change the constitution, it's a deeper dive. Here and here.
Um, where is HB 10128 for seniors?
That's a, that's a federal bill. It's not state.
And how does a senior in his county activate that?
That, that's, you're gonna have to talk to the DC delegation. That's above my pay grade. Maybe you'll send me back there someday to work on that. Here?
Hope so.
So you've spoken of several things that have been tried and always get...
Killed, dead.
And were killed.
Yeah.
What can we do to fight that?
That's why I reached out, I reached out to Marty to bring the powers that be into the battle. Because it's not going to happen in one county or two counties, it's going to happen across the state. Person I'm meeting with tomorrow to work on insurance reform, I, she's out of Fremont. I said, aren't you hearing things in Fremont? Well, you have 15 to 20%. I says, isn't that bad enough, let alone 30, 40%? So I want help across the state to make this happen. Go ahead.
Can we just call our representative, I mean, it sounds like you're going to bat for us, but if it keeps getting...
I'm going to bat for you a day on it.
If it keeps getting killed, then what can we do to help fight that?
I would reach out to the other legislators as well. Say 30 to 40% is not acceptable. The system is broke.
What is the pushback that you're getting from the rest of the delegation's?
There are some who prefer to make sure that it's, that it's protected. At one point, we were looking at doing a backfill into local governments of 84 million. And I'm starting to feel a little tender and merciful there and thinking maybe, and then I finally said no. I, I finally said no. We can't, we can't come up with 84 million out of the general fund every year to make life good again. So I was a no vote. Okay. Sir?
I didn't quite hear what you said about the 2019 assessment cap. What was, or the cap?
This cap, it'll put it back to 29, 2019 levels.
You're proposing that or it's passed?
No, I, I'm entering it for the 2024 session.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's one, that's one of two bills I've already filed for next winter.
What's the bill number?
It'll, it'll, it still has to be numbered, yeah. It's a process. You move it in, we have certain attorneys that do tax, and they'll work on it, and we'll send it back and forth and say, I like this, I don't like that. Boom, then it's on the floor. It's gonna be a little interesting. It's a budget session. As Marty knows, we have to have a two-thirds vote. We have to get up and sell ourselves for two to three minutes on the floor just to get it moved into a committee. So it's a little extra lifting, but we can do it.
Dan, you got a question?
Okay, here, and then back there.
Your, that, that bill for next year to cap property tax, is that strictly for residential or is that gonna include business? And does it...
I'm focused on residential. Yeah.
Does it cap it...
2019 levels.
Does it cap it going forward, or do new property owners get assessed at a different...
No, it's, it's capped. That's what it is. New property owners, I should point out on this bill that we passed this year, it's not for second homeowners. If you're looking for a tax break on second homes, this is for the original property owner. This is specific to those who live in Wyoming and call it home.
Is there a... Will you come over and see the bill now?
Yeah. Pull up Senate Joint Resolution 3.
Senate Joint Resolution 3.
Right.
Thank you.
That says it's state of Wyoming. So I'm going to ask again politely, respectfully, why does it say state of Wyoming, tax exemption versus seniors?
That didn't pass.
That failed.
Failed. Welcome to, welcome to the book that all failed. Okay, but you were, you were saying a long number. And I get, I get, yeah, I get asked about all the federal bills all the time, and that's. I got, I got enough worry, but it failed. It failed. It failed. We can bring it back, but I think we have to change the Constitution.
Just asking.
Back, the back row first. How are you?
Yeah, so I'm trying to prepare just to find out where the money goes. See that the county budget from their, from their budget, I think, is only a 10 percent increase this year. Is that right? That's what's proposed?
We're still right.
We haven't, we haven't set the budget this year. We haven't done it yet.
Yes, and what's published?
That's last year's.
No, no, it's proposed for this year, right?
I know. We haven't, we haven't made a proposal yet.
Well, then, is this?
We are working through the numbers.
So I've got this on the county site, and it says that proposed for the, for this year is 21.074 million.
That was the budget they passed last year.
For this year?
Yeah, well, your budget, your end is July 1, so he's talking about the budget that ends in July 1.
That were currently in.
So then, then the, that was a 10 percent increase over the previous year.
I think so. I wasn't in office. I think so. I can't quote that.
So why don't governments operate like businesses where you can see an income statement? I can't go to any one source and find out where all of your income comes and where all of your expenses go. I can't see that in place, but I'd like to see that. I'd like to know where the money goes. And I should be able to follow it in public manner so that you could see where the money goes, right?
On our side, my side of the table, Senate Bill One, House Bill One. It's all up there. You can pull it up. You can go deep, deep into it. If you got a question, I'll hook you up with the, all the budget guys, because I know you're a budget guy. And we'll, we'll do the deep dive.
Okay, do that. Do we have the same thing for the county?
County publishes what we spend every month in the paper by law.
Okay, so I have to buy Senator Doc Stetter's?
Be welcome to. And by the way, we're public.
By law, we have to designate one paper in the process you're talking about. If I, I may, excuse me. By law, we have to designate a paper to put it in, and once a month, we're required to post that in the paper, and it's posted in the paper. What we spend every month is in the paper. All you gotta do is get.
And a side note, I have the Treasury send me so that we can put it on the front page where the money's going.
So I don't, you know, I don't care about the month by month. I want to see what your plan is, where you receive the money, and where the money goes. I don't know where, I don't know where I can see that fine.
The budget's posted on, on the website, what we budget in each category, so it's posted on the website too.
Okay, so, so property taxes go up by 26, 30 percent in some areas and so forth. And your budget only shows a 10 percent from last year. How much do you think the budget's going to be?
That's what I walked through before. If the industry was going up like you were, we'd have quite a bit, but I just showed you the numbers. The total taxes paid are not going up in the ratio you're talking about, sir. They are not. Industry, you lost $3 million to Rocky Mountain Power in that federal assault. And oil and gas, you lost another four, five million. We're losing millions off of there. Your taxes are filling the gap back in between them, and I told you that. That's the hard part. But so, no, they are not proportionate to one another. Keep, keep industry funded at the same pace that you're going, we would have a lot of money. Number one, the one thing I didn't talk about was PILT. If the federal agencies had to pay their share of taxes, we wouldn't have this problem. 77 percent of this county is federal lands that do not pay the same taxes you do. They pay one-third. And we haven't had a raise in the federal rate for 20 years. In other words, the feds, all this land behind you, it's not getting its taxes raised. And so 20 years, and so that big picture is how that all plays into it. That's why it's not proportionate. It is not proportionate with one piece of the puzzle of taxes.
So what's the total revenue for the county?
The total revenue for the county right now, the total revenue sheet that I just showed you that is proposed, which is an estimate, right now sits at 24 million this year, okay, is what it will be. And I have 26 million in requests, okay, that have come in that I've been accused not looking at. And so that, that's what we will be looking at as three commissioners and going through every one of those that go through it. And so that's the numbers for this year. And that's disproportionate to what inflation is. Because you're telling me what inflation is in, on the bottom line to it. Like I said, don't forget that. The total, for us, is what, how much revenue we have coming, just like you. You look down and say, okay, how much am I bringing in in wages? Okay, is those wages keeping up with inflation? My answer to you is no. And so neither is ours. This is all, we're in the same boat together, okay? That's all there is to that in this discussion. We are in the same boat up against what that is going on in a nationwide economy, and we're affected hugely by the oil and gas, but coal is one of the big ones. I'll come to you, ma'am. And so I don't know if I answered it there, but don't, nothing is proportional. Your taxes are going up, mine are going up. We're all going up. Everybody at this table, they're going up, okay? I'll come back to, all right? I think you're first, one of you, sir.
It tells to me what you're saying is, you know, we, we have a deficit because of oil and gas. We don't have the money from there. We don't have money from other industries. And yet, it feels like the answer has been pointed to the homeowners. Is there a more equitable way? Do we need to raise a, a different kind of tax? Do we need to tax 1 percent on food or something like that? Maybe that's not.
Been through the food tax when we actually got. Food tax, when we got it pulled off, it was very, it was very popular, pulling it off, okay?
Okay, real quick, everybody. Um, so the, the maximum income that would qualify you for the rebate, wouldn't, you, that, that income doesn't even qualify you to buy a house in Lincoln County or in Star Valley right now. And so a lot of the demographic that you're going to see that has that level of income is actually right. And those landlords are going to pass on this increased property tax. They're not going to absorb that. It's going to get passed on to the landlord and the renter. And I, I know that this is a complicated situation, and I appreciate what the efforts that you've taken to try to address this for people that own property. But, you know, this, this town, this part of Lincoln County is heavily supported by people. And, you know, that's, that's families. That, you know, that's fully fledged families. Those are people who work professional jobs in this town. And so, you know, can you talk to some opportunities as to how we might protect that part of our community?
The only thing I can say is that's got to come from your legislature. We, I have to follow the rules. And, and what, what is laid out in the state statutes is what I have to follow. If I deviate from that, I'll get a nice orange joint, orange jumpsuit of some sort, you know? I'll end up in jail. So that's why it's important to work with people like Senator Doc Stetter to get a bunch of this stuff changed so we can change that tax issue. In the whole process of changing the tax issue, you got to remember Wyoming is one of the few states that doesn't have a state income tax. And you can change it, and you can lower, and then you can probably introduce state income tax. Because it's discussed, if I'm not wrong.
You're correct.
Every year. Every year. So, um, it's our choice as to what we want to, what we want to do. And state income tax would address a lot more people. Because you have more people that own, you have more people that earn money than that own real estate. So, so maybe, I don't know. Maybe that is a valid thing. I, I'm not for it. I can tell you that. But.
We have a few more questions that I hear. But just real quick, you guys, because we only have a limited amount of time, but let's have just a few more questions, like fast, heavy hitter questions, and then we'll keep moving forward, okay? Go ahead.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that they're pointing out the industry is going down. I'm not raising your property values to cover that. I'm following the market. I don't ask the commissioners what they need. I don't care what they need. I'm just doing what the statute tells me to do. So don't get misconstrued that I'm raising your values to cover their losses. That's not how.
I'll, I'll start selecting people. Okay, go ahead. With the microphone, please.
Okay, I am here to say I'm thankful for the Senator being here for this meeting and everything that you're doing on your end. So everything that I am addressing right now is not towards the Senator. It's actually towards our county and our commissioners and everyone up to the Senator level. So I believe the Senator is doing his part, but I don't believe that the county is. The property tax, the, some people that are protesting, they're winning. I mean, some of these houses are being valued, and they're not even finished being built yet, and they're being valued at millions of dollars. They're not even worth that. That's an issue with the way that the valued has been assessed. Unbuilt houses, vacant houses being assessed at millions of dollars, that's ridiculous. Houses that aren't even occupied, let alone my house, that's not even worth, not even worth what you guys have sent me that it's saying that it's worth that. And I know I'm not alone. And a lot of people don't know what they can do or that they could protest. You know, they don't read. They don't have time. They got busy families. So I think it's ridiculous that we have to go to you and protest it, adding a workload onto you as well, for you to come back and say, yeah, you're right. Here's the comps, and actually, you're right. Here's your money back. That's ridiculous. You guys should do it right the first time. How would you feel if your bank did it wrong the first time and said, you know, here's your money, here's what your money is worth. I'm only going to give you a tenth of that. That's ridiculous. So, um, I think that we could cut costs between the hospitals and weed and pass, I think, at least the hospital budgets. I mean, I pay to go to the hospital. I don't understand why their budget's so big. They get money, private funding and everything else. I think the school budget should be cut. And my kid's in school, so I can say that. The school board is not doing what we're asking them to. And if you show up to a school board meeting, they're not doing what we're asking them. Let's cut their funding till they do what we want them to do. So.
Let's give them a chance to respond, and then we'll keep going. We've got lots of questions.
Number one on the schools, by statute, they, they have to mill levy. We don't have the option to cut them.
It's mandated.
When people said we can tell them what to cut, can't happen.
How do we change that?
How do we change that statute?
It has to be amended.
That's a state statute. I have no control over that. That's a state. The school, schools are autonomous to us, literally. The quote I've always been given, the most powerful boards in the world, school boards.
And, and the fact remains, the schools, the education system, which is three school districts in Lincoln County and the, and the state fund, the state foundation, that's 66.5 percent. That's for 10 months of this year. So, so that's the bulk of your taxes.
So we're going to go to the back and then up to Larry here next, okay?
Okay, so my question is going to be from the local community. And recently, I got shown a website at LincolnCountyWI.gov. And you can, you can go on this site and you can check your own property tax on how it was, or how it was obtained. And I got snooping around, so I looked at mine. I've got 2.84 acres. And my last year's taxes, I paid $3,3297.48. So I got snooping around a little bit. I looked at two county employees. The first one having 11.61 acres, a better house than mine, more outbuildings than mine. They paid $2,000, or $2,271.99. So I looked at another one. They have 12, a 12.2 acres, a better house than mine, a great, nice shop. They're paying $1,153.44. I'd like an explanation of how that.
Yeah, we do have. So basically, the acreage on these people that he's talking about, they're being valued on productivity, not market, because they provided receipts showing that they're actually producing on their ground. Anybody that's producing on their ground, selling an ag product can have an ag rate which is valued based on productivity, not market. Therefore, the value of the land is substantially less.
Okay, so I've got one acre that's being assessed.
Then you need to, you need to provide receipts and apply for the ag.
I tried that. You guys wouldn't listen to me on that.
I, well, if that's the case, and you didn't have the receipts. Because if you have receipts where you show and you're producing to capacity, we put you in ag.
But regardless, the housing is not different. My house.
There are different market values. There are different market adjustments in every area in the county. Well, you can say that, but we, you can, we can, you can come to my office. I can show you.
But why do we have to do that? Why isn't it just right the first time?
I'm not saying that my values are wrong. What I'm saying is, is there different market adjustments in every area in Lincoln County? I'm not putting the same market adjustment on every property in Lincoln County. The market's not the same throughout Lincoln County. And if they're in ag lands, the market values would be very different. So I'm more than happy to provide you that data.
Okay, up here to Larry in the front.
Yeah, I just, I've dealt with Senator Doc Stetter, Marty, and I've worked with him. And I understand the problems with our coal and oil and all that now. That has impacted us. But I've wound up like a lot of men in here with white hair, and we're getting old, and we moved into our home. And this tax problem, it hurts because the three years from 19 to 21, I, it went up 7,800. From 21 to 23, as assessment, I went up 247,000 in what you said. I just, I, I just unfortunately can't get my head around it. Is that totally from the impact of the influx of people moving here and just paying whatever they want? And, and if a person did come into our neighborhood, let's say, and bought, paid a million for a house, and I know stuff in there wasn't worth 500,000, are they paying tax on a million?
Well, this is what, part of the problem for the mass appraisal is, if, if that, when I make that market adjustment, it may put them at the million, and they may be a little, they may be less. Because I do have properties, once I meet that, make that market adjustment, I will have properties that sold that will, that are actually valued more than what they paid for, and I will have properties that pay less. I'm not allowed to just go in and set a property at exactly what it is sold for. So they may or they may not. It just depends on the market.
The reason this hurts so bad is you get in your 70s, and you don't want to go anywhere else. You want to stay in this home. And I was a cabinetmaker. If anybody ever thinks there was money in that. Yet, you become fixed. You're set. And you think you can make it without being a burden on anybody or even our, our neighbors or anything. And all of a sudden, these things just start shooting up.
When you value property based on market value, it's very dangerous. Because the real estate market is the most unpredictable market you can use for setting property values. But that is in the Wyoming Constitution. Until they change that, I'm stuck.
I get all that. I totally get it.
Okay, a few more questions, and then we need to let these people go. In the back, standing up?
Yes, um, so, um, I understand that you value, I, I still don't understand, are we at market value or are we at assessed value?
We tax on assessed. I set the market value, then that gets taken times nine and a half percent. That is the amount that is applied to the mill. It is the, the nine and a half percent of market. So you're taxed on assessed.
And then my other question is, I feel the same way as the gentleman that was just speaking. I was planning to die here in my home, and you would need to pull my dead body out. But it doesn't seem like that's, it doesn't seem like that's going to happen. And I feel I'm going to be forced out of my house, and I'm going to have to sell at some point if this keeps happening. And if I can't sell for what you were telling me it's worth, do I get some money back?
No, basically, again, we're valuing a year behind. So like, I'm not telling you what, like, when I sent out my notice of value, I'm not saying that that's what you can sell your house for today, because we're in a different market today than we were in 2022. Understandably, if every, if everybody's right and the market is starting to decline, then my market adjustments will decline and your values will start to come back down.
We got another question up here in the front, real quick.
Just to say, I appreciate everybody coming tonight and voicing your opinions and trying to address these topics. And it's most appreciated, all the work you've done, Dan. I appreciate it so much. But I did want to ask you a question, and I'm kind of saying this to everybody. What happened to Wyoming? Where did it go? I was born and raised, born in Cody, raised in Castor. I've lived in Star Valley quite a long time. And I, I see value in freedom. I see value in land ownership and taking care of the land. I see value in being able to mine and use oil and gas. Are we beholden to the federal government, or do we have some state rights that will let us move ahead with what we as a state would really do well with?
You don't change.
Sovereignty.
Don't need the comments. If we don't change the President in the next election, it's going to destroy Wyoming. The last two to three years have financially devastated Wyoming. It's financially devastated Lincoln County. And I don't care where you stand on political spectrum, but it literally, literally depends on millions, if not billions of dollars in oil, gas, and coal. I'm chairman, I'm chairman of the minerals, and I just got done telling Marty there was a reason why the next three meetings are in coal communities. That's what we want to say. Oil, gas, and coal.
Okay, sir, quick question. I have a really quick, two brief questions directed at the assessor. Title 39 defines real property, and you're tasked with assessing real property, correct? Real property is defined as land, apartments, including structures affixed thereto. What does affixed thereto mean?
Means it should be affixed to the ground. And if you want a definition of why we're taxing sheds on skids, is because I have a memorandum from the Department of Revenue that says I have to.
What about structures that are unoccupiable, that are on axles, that are not attached to a foundation, that have no infrastructure, utilities, or anything connected to it? Why did I get a bill for over $2,000 for modulars on my property that are sitting on axles, not a foundation, no utilities? I'd like an answer. And then the follow-up is.
Okay.
Sir? You might have, you might have answered the question. Is all oil and minerals on federal land only? Is that?
No. One of the, to your question, he's asking, is all the minerals on federal? No, it's not. One of the big things that you have in your advantage in Lincoln County is called Kemmercoat. That is privately owned coal reserves. And there's 100 years worth of coal in there. If we can get a president in the White House who will let us dig it and burn it, okay? And that's the bottom line to it. And so Kemmercoat, the mine you drive by when you go by there, those are private holdings. They don't even screw around with the federal government because it's so screwed up right now. That's why you'll see the highway move, which Senator Doc Stetter got us 15 million to try to do, to try to keep that big tax base in place. to try to keep that big tax base in place. So no, it's not, you have an advantage, okay? Carbon County and some of these other counties that didn't have it were depending on, on federal. 77% of this county is federal land, but that is excluded down through there. Kemmerer Coal Corporation, which used to literally control where I live, that, that is what those reserves are.
Okay, so if it's federal land, then we have to abide by it?
Yeah. Now, we're getting the permit on a federal land, can take up to 20 years versus on a, on a privately owned one, it'll take you about five, is what it'll get. I come, I come from the coal industry, so, that's where I, I'm a coal miner, sorry.
Is there any other quick questions from, go ahead.
For the chairman and the commission, I just wanted to clarify, I think I only answered, but when you set the budget, that's open to us, those are open hearings. We can go in and we can question and hear everything you're doing, am I correct?
That's correct, so it's both on the...
Peggy, go ahead.
No, I was on the committee last year, and we decided to go to all the budget meetings. So I went to the hospital budget meeting, and I sat there, and people were getting awards and whatever. Basically, everybody went out of their rooms except for me, and I'm sitting there waiting for the budget. And they said, why are you here? And I said, because I wanna, you know, observe the budget meeting. And they said, no, no, it's going to be an executive session, and you can't wait here.
Oh, I tried to get that information too, I know your frustration, but I'm talking about the commissioners. The excuse they used with me is that it's a nonprofit, it's not a government, and I won't go into the legalities of that, but...
Two different things. The, the hospital district, whether it's North Lincoln or South Lincoln, are different than Lincoln County. They have, they have revenue that comes into them because of taxation, and it gets distributed by the county treasurer to them. Separate board and a separate district from the county. Yes, we do go through a process to, we, we have some where we have the senior citizens come to us. And you're welcome to attend those, and it's just a matter of, if you show an interest, we can let you know about that. And then it, we can't set the budget, finalize it until even after the start of the fiscal year. We set that in July, but we also have to wait for, to know how much revenue we can project to be able to balance that budget with the expenses. Commissioner Conley talked about 24 million dollars roughly, potentially, and 26 million dollars in requests. I think of a, of a home in Uena County in Evanston where they help troubled youth. And we hope to be able to put some money towards that, because there are young people that go from Lincoln County to there. That's one of about 60 other entities that come to the county looking for miss, for assistance. Have you heard of the program Climb Wyoming? I am an advocate for Climb Wyoming. That's a program that we, you, fund through the county commissioners, or we have. Hope to be able to do it again this year where it helps single mothers to be able to get better job qualifications, to be able to better make more money for their family and provide for their family. So did that answer your question?
If I could interrupt, yeah. If I could interrupt, you folks know where to find me, I'm very public, and you can reach out to me anytime. I'll come to your home, I'm not scary, I'll show you any of this, and good to work with you. But I've gotta be on the road to Casper to figure out insurance problems, so, thank you.
So, real quick, Shay just has a couple more comments, and then we're gonna finish up.
All I really wanted to say was, if you did sign the, the sign and sheet, we'll probably blast you with an email, let you know progress, what we're doing. But we also need everyone to email all 23 counties, which will provide the information to you...
Amen.
...to encourage them to amend the constitution. So one, you've gotta make sure all your friends know, next year on the ballot, you have to vote for this to get amended. Second, I'm also gonna touch again with Senator Doc Stedder. The constitution needs to be amended for the school mill levy. Every other one is not to, not to exceed. The schools, that mill levy was when there were hardly anyone here. It is archaic, it's outdated, and to think that it's a blank check is absolutely ridiculous, especially when we just said the amount 60-something percent is going to that. I also believe we need a third-party auditor of special districts, of hospital, like, I think we've just gotta drill down to cutting the fat. I mean, that's my take. And I know you have one more question.
I have a question for the assessor. You say you float the numbers between the 1.15 down to the 9.0, you play with that to make all your stuff come out right. Are you the one that chooses where those numbers go and who actually pays a higher tax percentage than what they have to pay less? Or, and who does?
So basically, I'm not floating numbers. What I do is I take each assessment area and basically determine within that assessment area what the value is in comparison to the sales, and when whatever, when I can get to a median, that's what I assess the, the market rate at. But it's not picking and choosing which area's gonna do this, which area's gonna do that. It's not floating numbers, if that's the impression that I gave you. So we, I do set, I do take, I do the analysis, yes, but I'm not trying to float and pick on certain areas and say, you're gonna pay the higher end of this.
Well, somebody asked, when the numbers get changed, if a number area goes down in valuation, you have to then pick who's gonna cover that then?
No, I'm not, I'm not covering anybody's budget, I'm simply taking the replacement cost of...
No, I'm not saying by a budget, I'm saying by how much people are being assessed in their taxes.
And that's all determined based on the assessment area that you're in and the market adjustment that's being applied, based on your cost of your house.
All right, everyone, thank you so much for coming out, and thank you to everyone that came. And thank you Alpine for showing up, that's great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.